Right, councillors. Welcome councillors, officers and members of the public in the gallery, which there are none, or watching by the live stream. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders, past and present. Councillor Mackay, a prayer.
Thank you. We beseech you, Lord, that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you.
Amen.
Could I have a move to suspend standing orders, please, to make an acknowledgement of passing from our councillor? Councillor Moore, second up. Councillor McPhee, all those in favour? Thank you. It's come to councillors' attention that councillor Donald William Hayden, OAM, passed away on Friday the 13th of May. Mr Hayden was a councillor for the Shire of Swan Hill from 1960 to 1988 and was Shire President in 1962, 63, 1972, 73 and 1986, 1987. He received the Order of Australian Medal in 1994. So we acknowledge that he's passing last week. Thank you. Can I have a second up? Councillor McPhee, all those in favour? Thank you. Apologies and leave of absence.
As may may. Yes, we have apologies from councillor Chris Jeffrey and councillor Nicole McKay and of course leave of absence councillor Stuart King.
I have a move that we accept apologies, please, and leave of absence councillor Young, councillor McPhee, all those in favour? Thank you. Directors and officers present, we have acting chief executive officer Roseanne Carver. Kate Jewell, who is our development manager, Svetla Petkova, director of infrastructure, Helen Morris, our acting director of corporate services, Nathan Kirin, our economic development coordinator, Terri McCormick, our executive support officer and Sharon Lindsay, our executive support officer and Ashley Free, our finance manager. Thank you. Confirmation of minutes for the scheduled meeting of council held on the 19th of April and the unscheduled meeting of council held on the 22nd of April. I have a mover that these minutes true and correct. The word's not over. Councillor McPhee, second up. Councillor Moore, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Disclosures of conflict of interest. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest in the items in today's agenda? No, councillors. There are none. Joint letters and reading of petitions. Carver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We don't, and we haven't actually received a petition, but we are aware that a petition is likely to be coming to council in the near future and the petition regards a request for council to declare a climate emergency. Just foreshadowing, that is a possible petition to council.
And any questions for public question time?
We have received none.
And no open forum as there is no one in the gallery. Moving on to section B, reports. B 22.37, audit committee. Miss Morris, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The audit committee, as you know, are a committee that oversees councillors' risk management practices. We have a number of internal audits and other audits that are routinely done to ensure that council minimises its risks and we had a request that the unscheduled minutes of the audit committee that met on the 7th of April come to council and there's a list there of the discussion points, including updating the internal audit and strategic audit plan. We had a risk management update. We looked at the, we had a budget update and also there was pandemic planning in response that was discussed and several other things. You've been given a copy of those unconfirmed minutes from the 7th of April and we're just recommending that council note the contents of the report.
Thank you, Miss Morris. Any questions, councillors?
No question. Move motion as per the recommendation.
Thank you councillor McPhee, second up and councillor Young, all those in favour? Yeah, sorry, don't disrespect the...
No, it's all right.
Apologies councillor McPhee. All those in favour? You don't wish to speak, however?
No.
All those in favour? Passed unanimously. B 22.38, quarterly review of financial performance and financial position to the 31st of March 2022. Morris, can please.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, this is our quarterly report, which I'm actually going to get our new finance manager, Ashley, to talk me through the variables and the unfairness.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So presented is our quarterly review of our financials up to the 31st of March. We reported the favourable, favourable variances that we're forecasting at this stage. As you can see, we're forecasting a favourable budget variance of $309,000. So I've listed the items there with the significant variances that we've identified. On the first page, major movement there is our employee costs. So we've got ongoing savings in our employee costs. We've got a number of positions that have been vacant for a while and recruitment's been a bit slow. So there's ongoing savings there to the councillors as those positions remain vacant. You can see the last quarter there, we reported $390,000 variance. I'm reporting $510,000 now. We've got some significant positions being vacant, so that number has increased a little. The rest of them on the first page there, we've had no major changes. Over the page, we had an unfavourable variance at the final settlement last, the last quarter of $199,000. I've brought that down to $150,000. The numbers there are seemingly going quite well. We compared it with the final settlement banner that the admissions and attendances have been up sort of thing. So what we were forecasting there originally isn't quite so bad. There's $150,000 unfavourable variance there. We've increased the unfavourable variance in the livestock exchange a little bit. It's trending sort of in that direction. Looks like that will be the result or will be close to that result by the end of the year. So that's goes against us a little bit. You can see right on the bottom there, the $600,000, that was from the rate surplus that we sold on at the April meeting, of course. So yeah, it's been, we've taken the appropriation of that to cover the MAB workover scheme to the additional costs we incurred there. That money's been forwarded towards that. So all up, we're forecasting a $309,000 favourable variance to what we originally budgeted. The original budget was $102,000 surplus, so looking at an additional $309,000 on top of that. A bit over 1% of rates will be our surplus for the year. Also, just to note, the change in law with government act at the December meeting was to declare whether we were to adopt a revised budget. So our results are obviously well in advance of the budget, so there's no need for us to adopt a revised budget. So that wasn't done by the December report, so representing the schedule into the December council meetings going forward. So yeah, just recommendations to adopt to, yeah, look into a $309,000 surplus to our budget and that note to CEO statement, the revised budget's not required for the 21, 22 years.
Thank you, Mr Free. Questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee.
Usually you ask questions about the unfavourable stuff, but just wanted to, the CEO, Ash mentioned about the employee costs being favourable. We're always on that we haven't got enough staff to do a lot of the stuff we, the work that's got in progress now. Why is it taking so long to employ people?
I will show you the answer to that councillor. It is certainly true that there are, we are having difficulty, as I'm sure a number of other, many other councils are having, in attracting some people to some positions. Planners are a case in point. So we currently have two vacant positions that we have advertised and have recently advertised again, so we're hopeful that we'll, we'll get those positions. In some cases, there have been some delays in terms of actually finding suitable people and then the, there's been a bit of a lag between the time of appointment and when they can actually arrive. So those sort of combinations, but it's, it's largely been the market is fairly tough and it is difficult to fill some, some positions across the organisation. There's another position in the engineering area that's been advertised a couple of times and that's still not completed either. So I think it's important that we only appoint people that are able to do the job. So if we haven't got suitable applicants, we can try and bring in contractors for short times where we, where we need to or where they're available. And sometimes you'll see slight upturn in numbers for contractors where we've had to do that. But yes, it's important we get the right people into the right jobs. So sometimes we have to be patient.
And the question didn't actually unfavourable. I take it that a lot of that's due to COVID issues and any conclusion?
Pretty much a lot. Settlement's a case in point, parking, car, yeah, position, funding costs, things like that.
Any other questions, councillors? Councillor Moore?
Yeah, you mentioned the final settlement, Ash. So previous forecast was $199,000 worse than what the forecast was and now we've improved to $150,000 worse than what we predicted. So what was the forecast sub right by contribution to the final settlement in the first place?
I can't tell. That there, that number there is purely the admissions. So yeah, the actual what we budgeted for the admissions, I don't know off the top of head, sorry.
Any other questions, councillors? Can I have a mover, please?
I'll move the motion as per the recommendation, Miss Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Thank you. Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor?
I just quickly, Miss Mayor, the budgets are flexible and this shows how flexible they are. The claim that flexibility is still in our favour.
Councillor Young?
I'd just like to back up what Liz has just said, but also say how nice it is to see a surplus like that. Oh, not a surplus, but a favourable return like that. So good on you, finance Obama.
Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore?
It's obviously, this budget shows us the results of the pandemic and COVID. The fact that we haven't filled so many positions shows what is Australia wide. It's just very, very difficult to fill positions all over Australia. There's, there's a, the upside of that is we've got a surplus and we hope that that actually doesn't go for much longer. We need our positions filled and we need council to be doing the services that we're here to carry out. So all in all, it's, it's good, but we've got to fill those positions as soon as we can, if, if we can. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Moore. Would you like to close the debate? Councillor McPhee? Can we put a vote? All those in favour? Passed unanimously. B 22.39, subdivision in the farming zone, dwelling incision affected by land subject to inundation overlay located at 10 at River Road, Swan Hill. Miss Jewell, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just as a precursor to this, a request was made on Friday, late Friday afternoon, from a consultant acting in this matter for this item to be, I think it's, we'd like the application proposed to be withdrawn from the agenda. By way of background, round about the middle of December, the applicant was provided a opportunity to speak at a councillor assembly that was scheduled for the eleventh of January. At that time, the applicant advised that he did not wish to take up that invitation and the councillors may recall that the matter was discussed at the assembly of the eleventh of January. Subsequently, the applicant is asserting that that offer wasn't actually made. And so I guess it's a matter that's got to be considered by councillors if they do wish this matter to be determined today or if it be deferred to another time to enable both the applicant and the objectors to present.
Could I have a mover for deferral? Is there an appetite to defer?
I'll move for the deferral.
Can I have a second up? Councillor Moore? Do you wish to speak to the, the motion to defer?
Yes, I just think it's something that we should do, just giving the opportunity and then there's no, I guess, inconsistency in what's been said. So they're giving the opportunity and then come to the presentation.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, I have a similar view. It's likely may have come up with 12th of January now and it probably won't possibly inconvenience the time in January through a while days and, and everything else. We really must leave no stone unturned in these issues and we should give them that opportunity. It delays things enough, but I think we should, it deserves the opportunity to put their case and then we've done everything we can do.
Thank you councillor. Any other speakers for the motion? Would you like to close the debate?
No, I think until then.
Thank you. All those in favour of deferring? Passed unanimously. B 22.4. B twenty two point four zero. Nye West Landscape Master Plan, twenty twenty two. Miss Jewel and Miss Securin? Or just Miss Securin?
Just handsome here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, councillor Engage, Pond Studio, is going to take the landscape master plan for Nyea riverfront, which includes a in Lewis Park and the southern section of the Nyea River Reserve. And also the Nyea West Community Park in Myer Avenue. These plans are going to support potential future development of these sites in line with the community wants and needs. Key design principles for these considerations for these master plans include the Nyea riverfront, um, re- revitalising the opening space, potential new community gathering, um, space. And for the Nyea West Community Park, um, Myer Avenue, potential new stage, tall building, um, which will support community events and rationalise those types of infrastructures that are existing, including maternal childcare building and the public meetings. To support this development, this master plan, Pond Studio has established research high level concept plans, um, to initiate discussion and provide the framework for community input going forward. Um, to progress these plans, council staff together with Pond Studio will engage key stakeholders and the community for comment suggestions as per, uh, their task, communication and engagement plan. Uh, this will include further site meetings, one-on-one sessions and by councillors' let's talk, where online page. Results and feedback provided for this process will be compiled and presented back to councillor for further consideration. There's note, the proposed implementations of agreed actions from this process, process will be subject to future opening opportunities. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Securin. Any questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Um, yeah, Mr. Securin, just, this gives the community opportunity to make changes to the plan if, if the community in group want that. If they don't agree with the plan as such, it's an opportunity for them to change, yes.
Sure.
Yeah.
This is a basis of providing, I suppose, a, a framework for where, um, our development cycle will be.
Councillor Moore?
Yeah, look, this could be sort of a starting point, perhaps, you know, for future development.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I have a, a question, Mr. Securin. There's been some talk around, uh, some land around the, the pump station. If that is something that the community would like to see in, in the future, this would be a really good time to illustrate that back to, directly back to council?
Yes, that will be part of, um, the feedback and that's the needs and wants of the community that will, will take in point and bring back to you for consideration.
Any other questions, councillors? Could I have a mover? Councillor McPhee, second there? Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, I think it's, um, this is the first step in the, um, as the, um, motion says, they're concept plans and it's about going to the community to make sure we get what they want. It's their community, they're the ones who live in it day to day. So we've got to listen to what they have to say, and this is just a starting point, as Mr. Securin said. It's a concept at this stage and we certainly hope that the community gets involved in those areas. Thank you.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, uh, yeah, Ben. Look, uh, as councillor McPhee says, uh, this, it gets the, uh, community involved, uh, in what they want in their community. But more broadly, um, the, the, um, enhancement of our riverfronts in all our towns along the river, uh, it's a, such a great thing to see, um, it'll enable standing things and hopefully the, uh, the trail running the entire length of the Murray, um, these points of which we have along the river, which, um, will be greatly enhanced and provide facilities for people travelling that trail. Uh, it'll add to our tourism, uh, potential and, uh, along the way, and, um, I'm certainly looking forward to not just Nyea, but our other towns, uh, Robben Vale and, uh, Boundary Bend, Woodwood, that these towns that connect us through the river, uh, for, for each and every one of us, uh, in the community and, and tourism, and I think it's a great, uh, a great, uh, concept and I really hope the community embrace this and, uh, really come up with, uh, and enhance these, these original plans here.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Young?
So I just wanted to say, I think probably community feedback is one of the most important parts of, um, these type of engagements, um, within to what should be happening within their local area, um, and Nye and Nye West is probably one of the most successful groups with input from their community group, the football club, the Lions Club, and a range of other areas, plus a lot of individuals that feed into things. So I think, um, letting it go out to the community is the best thing that we can do at the moment and get the feedback and make changes.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor McPhee, would you like to close the debate?
Oh, look, I just, I was saying, look, it's, um, part of this is the riverfront, we've got Nyea West, but also the riverfront at Nyea. And the riverfront along from Swan Hills from Nyea to Woodwood, we have got, it's in its natural state. We don't have any weeds in this area, so we've got to settle that particular aspect of the tourism, not much better than what we do. And those sort of plans will give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. We'll put it to the, to a vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. B twenty two point four one, the draft Robben Vale Riverfront Master Plan, twenty twenty two. Mr. Securin, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, we're very excited to bring this, uh, proposal master plan to, to you today. Um, councillor Engage, G S A, um, quite a while back, was going to take a master plan for the Robben Vale riverfront, which included an Aboriginal historical heritage assessment to inform and support the master plan design. Key consideration for this master plan included protecting and highlighting Aboriginal heritage and services designs, highlighting the cultural diversity and characteristics of Robben Vale, creating a better connection between town set and the riverfront, promoting open spaces and potential animal events, um, and improving the riverfront amenities and connection to the Murray River. A key focus of this master plan included six sites, um, they were Robben Street, uh, Centenary Park, the community centre, the riverfront and Billings Heath Park. Under each of these six zones, um, G S A have provided a background analysis, incorporated community feedback, listed opportunities and strengths, earmarked design intent and provided some reference images and visual content designs. Approximately a hundred people have provided, um, input to the plan to date, and this included through, uh, two Zoom meetings, an onsite meeting, an open forum held at the Robben Vale Community Centre. It's proposed that further consultation with the draft master plan will occur in accordance to our, a communication and engagement plan. Uh, this includes meeting with key stakeholders, uh, undertaking further site meetings and also, um, including through councillors' let's talk portal. Following in this process will be presented back to council for consideration before the draft report is finalized. Any questions on this?
Questions, councillors? Councillor Moore?
Just, I know, uh, Mr. Securin, um, planting page, uh, section seventeen, um, involves a considerable number of trees and I've just been to the urban green in East, uh, on the weekend, um. It looks like double or triple the trees will be planted there. Can you give us any idea of the number of trees?
The tree, key focus was Robben Street, providing some greenery, um, through there, um, councillor, um. So that was probably the main feature of the trees, um, in Centenary Park itself, as you all can imagine, it's pretty well aligned with trees. Um, so that, uh, palette does also include shrubs and, um, and, and small ground covers. So, and it's also, uh, a, a master plan, um, which we're obviously looking at a ten year plus, um, futuristic on that side, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? Could I have a mover then? Councillor McPhee, as per the recommendations?
As per the recommendations, yes.
Thank you. Could I have a second there? Councillor Young, would you like to speak to the motion, please?
Yeah, look, this is, um, similar to our last, um, reporting, raising on Nyea West. This is Robben Vale, this is well overdue, the riverfront master plan at Robben Vale. Unlike Nyea West, Robben Vale doesn't have a natural riverfront because of the weir, but I firmly believe and I've always advocated that Robben Vale has the best riverfront along the Murray River. And I think we should make sure that we use that to the best ability we can. This master plan will give us that opportunity and give the locals input into it, and it's great to see it's done in stages so we can work on each area individually. I think it's important because it's going to be a big job overall, but it can be staged, which is great to see. Thank you.
Here, here, councillor McPhee. Councillor Young, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, just similar to the Nyea, I think this is another, um, area that has a whole lot of different community groups. Um, but I think it's important that we do get them all involved, um, maybe not so much with just even some one-on-one consultation with particular people and groups up there, um, you know, the visit to some of the different people in the shops and what do you think? Sort of thing, rather than just, than hooking into Zooms and things like that, I think would be a great benefit.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Moore, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Benham. Uh, look, ever since I've been on council, I've, I've, you know, realised that, uh, Robben Vale's riverfront is a, is an absolute diamond in the rough. And, um, this, uh, project will certainly polish that diamond. And as councillor McPhee alluded, um, the weir there gives such a beautiful natural, uh, uh, a, a, a beautiful place for water play um, in, uh, in our municipality. Uh, so I'm, I'm thinking it's just such a fantastic, uh, bit of progress here for Robben Vale and will really set it up for the future. Not only just for tourism, but for just the aspects of livability and make the most of what that, that natural asset there. It is just a glorious piece of river and, uh, glorious place for, for the local residents to be and, and for tourists. And it's going to and it will be done because we, uh, in a culturally sensitive manner, as we know, Robben Vale has a huge, um, cultural heritage history there. And, um, and I'll see in, in the plans here, there's a quite a hundred scar trees along that, there indicated. So I, I don't think I've ever seen an area with so many scar trees in a small area, and that, uh, that in itself is of major significance. So, uh, we look forward to going ahead in partnership to do, um, to get this happening. And, uh, thank you to all of you, Mr. Securin, we've worked very, very hard on this, we know, over the years. And, um, finally, we've got the funding and we've, uh, we haven't got the funding yet, we've got the process in underway and, uh, we will get, uh, hopefully at the end of this process. Hopefully it's not like the levy bank, which took, in a long amount of time, but, uh, we, we'll get a blueprint to go forward to get funding and, um, it'll really, really be the making of Robben Vale, I feel.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor McPhee, would you like to close? We'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Passed unanimously. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Securin. Report B twenty two point four two. I'm going to refer to Miss Carver for this one.
Thank you, Mayor Benham. Um, councillors, I, I'd request that this item actually be deferred, um, to a later meeting to allow us to undertake some, uh, some further research and investigation on this. Um, it's a very, um, in- important and sensitive matter and I think it's vital that we have it, uh, absolutely correct. Uh, it's come to my attention that we, uh, we, we really do need to do a little bit more investigation to, um, confirm this, so I'd request that the item be deferred.
Could I have someone move for deferral, please? Councillor Young, seconded, councillor Moore?
Yeah.
Councillor Young, would you like to speak?
No, I just think it's the, it's what you go.
Don't wish to speak, I have, councillor McPhee. All those in favour of deferral? Passed unanimously. Which brings us to section C. Let me slide down. Decisions which need resuscitation. Action. C twenty two point seven, the sign and seal report.
Thank you, Mayor Benham. Uh, as you can see, the, uh, report of the sign and seal documents, including the employment contract for their new CEO, Scott Barber, are there, um, for your information. Uh, so I ask that council notes the actions of signing sealing the documents under delegation as scheduled.
Terrific. Are there any questions, councillors? If not, could I have a mover, please, councillors? Councillor Moore, seconded, councillor Young, do you wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Young, all those in favour? Passed unanimously. And C twenty two point eight. Councillor Sam, please?
Thank you again, Mayor Benham. This is a list of councillor attendance at the various, uh, assemblies. Um, thank you for your perusal and, uh, correction if needed, but, uh, hopefully we've got that correct, a, a record of, of those meetings in terms of who was there and the, uh, the items discussed.
Any questions, councillors? Could I have someone move? For motion, thank you, councillor Young, seconded councillor Moore, do you need to speak to the motion, councillor Young? Councillor Moore, all those in favour? Passed unanimously. Which then brings us to section D, notices of motion.
We have none.
We have none. Section E, the shattered items.
I'm not aware of any.
I'm not, also not aware of any. Section F, urgent items not included in the agenda.
Uh, we have, um, we have none.
Section G, to consider an order on councillor reports. Councillor?
Uh, no one's sitting in there for anyone to write it.
Terrific. Councillor Moore?
I'll get it, well, I'll get it in the digital age then. Uh, twenty seventh of the fourth, the official opening of Hope Age Care, which was, uh, really a great, great facility, just one hill way up there. Fantastic facility, beautiful modern facilities out there. Uh, we are so lucky to have that facility. Um, went to the, uh, as some councillors here did, the twenty year A G M, uh, of Murray Mallie Len, um, opened my eyes to what Murray Mallie Len does, uh, I thought I had a rudimentary understanding and I did have a rudimentary understanding, but they do much more than what I thought. Um, third of the fifth recognition of, uh, the contributions to Rodding for the Disabled at Butt Reserve and the Robert Cratch Arena out there, that they do some great work with some awesome volunteers out there, uh, what they do there is just fantastic. Uh, third, the fifth also met Sam Farah, New South Wales Minister for the Blue and Transport and Roads at, at the Julebuck Bridge. And, uh, we discussed several options for the bridge and for Swan Hills, uh, future bridge as well, um, this, we had quite a lengthy discussion there. Uh, good young fellow and, um, yeah, we'll, we'll see what eventually it's there. Uh, ninth, the fifth, Nobourhood House Week, uh, at Swan Hill Nobourhood House, celebrating their, uh, what they do there. Twelfth, the fifth, uh, London Mallie Waste, uh, Resource Recovery Group Forum Meeting, that was the last of those meetings. At that meeting was Phil Diano, uh, the interim head of Recycle Victoria, and, uh, it was made known to him pretty plainly through all the members, um, at what sort of continuity there will be, um, there will be no grassroots, at this point, there's no grassroots advice to recycling Victoria, it'll be completely cut off, so, um, I don't know, anyway, he was told that, I'm not aware of the issue with tyres recently, he didn't know anything about what happens to tyres. Um, we had a, they had a long discussion about that and actually every other council brought, brought in with the problem of dump tyres illegally. That was a great, great meeting. Uh, fourteenth, the fifth, official opening of the Robben Vale Netball Courts and Changereens, which was, uh, really good to get up there and see and ended up staying all day. And, uh, and, uh, had a day at the footy, turned up for years, uh, chatting with the locals there, fantastic, and a few are really fantastic, great up there. Great community sport for, for, um, sport in Robben Vale. And, uh, lastly, the Mally Urban Greening Event at Nobourhood House, with some forty odd people turned up there. Um, it was sort of a little disappointing that we didn't get what you should plant in your backyard and species and much of what I thought we're going to get. We sort of got a lecture on, on climate change and a few other things, um, as well, to book, but anyway, we, we were there and, um, and, uh, a lot of, uh, community, uh, members wanted to talk afterwards, so it was an interesting, an interesting event.
Hmm.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor McPhee?
I'll look up from Smitha reporting, Miss Mayor, but, um, one of the things is the M A B rules review. There's quite a bit of work and community going on around that. M A B is our big body, which was based in Victoria, and they're updating their rules, which is well and truly in a timely manner, and it's, um, important that they keep consistent for the betterment of all local government. Thank you.
Thank you, and my report is a lengthy one, uh, but there are a couple of highlights of the danger of missing something. Obviously, Anzac Day was a big highlight for me personally, uh, and professionally, having, um, given a couple of Anzac Day addresses, also some citizenship ceremonies in there, the Hope Age Care that's been touched on, um, and also the Murray Mallie Len Dinner at the Orchard, which is a great facility that we're very, very lucky to have in Swan Hill. And also the Mally Regional Innovation Centre, Growing Smarter in the Mally site, that was, um, a couple of weeks ago, where I was asked to represent the upstream, uh, part of the region, which was, uh, fantastic. It was really a fantastic summit involving all sorts of technology and advances in, uh, in horticulture, which was fantastic. So, but there is much more in there, it's really want to read, should they wish to. Moving on to, uh, section H. In camera items. Could we have a mover to go into in camera? Councillor Moore?
Move as per recommendation.
Thank you. All those in favour? Thank you, and ask everyone to remain silent until the livestream is cut and we will be coming back from our in camera session to close the meeting via the livestream. to close the meeting via the livestream.